Call the meeting order, join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do. Percy, can I have a rule call, please?
Brian.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Justin.
Here.
John.
Here.
Yep.
Here. Full council, I love it. I will need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
One second.
Brian, I.
Lexi, I.
Don't deny.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. I will open up the floor to citizen comment pertaining to anything on the agenda for this evening. If anyone would like to address the council. All right, we'll go ahead and post citizen comment. Any questions on the consent agenda tonight?
Have there been any issues on the liquor license, Mike?
No. A motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
John. Jeff, I.
Motion carries brings us to P E D C. Denise is here. Got a catch off guard?
Yeah.
You are up.
I didn't think I'd be up this soon.
You are up. Well, grab one of those agendas when you come in next time and you'll know. You're due.
Thank you. So I brought a few team members.
Can I have to stand underneath there? There's where the microphone is.
Can I stand here?
The closer you get.
We may have a little spot out there.
I'm just used to standing. How's this?
Johnny Carson.
Right there with the green.
Yeah.
Microphone, so we just.
Sushi out.
Yep.
Check.
So I brought a few team members with me tonight. I would like you guys to meet eventually, the whole team. So if you guys want to stand up and just introduce yourselves and what niche you're following.
My name is Madison Randall. I'm a junior at Western Dubuque High School and I'm. I'm helping to kind of bring the high school voice to the Community Heart and Soul.
Great, great.
My name's Lynn Randall and I'm enjoying the process thus far. Actually, Madison is my daughter and her and Luke Boyle, who's, we decided we need some men on the team as well, which is great. And he's also very active in leadership roles at the high school. And we're getting together with another one of the members on Sunday to start our survey process. So we've been building all of these baby steps and now we're breaking up into the smaller group roles and getting to. Interviews. I also reached out to Jody Kramer at N I C C, who does the trio program there. And she's going to be helpful in helping us to reach some more minorities and get a little bit more diversity in our information so that we're not just reaching the typical homeowners that kind of are involved in everything. We're trying to reach some of the renters and some of the students and some people that come here just for business. And that's kind of what we're working on now is making those connections.
Attention.
Sorry, I did a workout, so my legs are a bruise. Denise Sims and I'm on the committee at the volunteer, just to kind of help where they they need any assistance. So right now we're just kind of working on getting our contacts and getting our outreach out there, figuring out our next steps. Our next plan, the surveys and all of the engagements and interviews that we're. Working with the team on all of that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, ladies. So I didn't get to meet with you guys in December, so quite a bit has gone on since then. So actually, our grant was approved by the community foundation in Vermont. So we've completed almost all of phase one and I've shown you their phase one and phase. They used to divvy them up by months. We kind of divvy them up by phases now. So we've done the application. We've got our our logo, which is right below there. Jerry Hess was the one who created that. We wanted it to be similar to the Piazza one, but we wanted it to be distinctive. I really like it. I really like it. You notice the P E D C logo in the middle there. Did you catch that? So yeah, I really like it. So that's our kind of our, what do I want to say, today, tomorrow, together, our. Tagline. Tag, tagline, thank you. We're working on community network map. We're working on making those connections, which you heard the ladies talk about. It it takes a lot of time to connect with people and get a connection to people. We are starting our surveys as Lynn talked to you about. We will be doing a resident survey and a high school student survey. And we expect to get a lot of information from that, but we know that there'll be some groups that we don't hear from. And so those are the groups we really want to target individually, like senior citizens perhaps, like renters perhaps. So those are the groups that we really want to try to meet with individually or in small groups. So we'll be planning some events, planning some activities to kind of get with people to get their information because we know that not everybody's going to respond to the surveys. We think the surveys will probably go out February, probably. So I'll keep you updated on that. Let's see. Oh, I created a Piazza Community Heart and Soul Facebook page. If you're on Facebook, please look. If you would. Our core team, I introduced you to a few of those. We have a few others who will be coming over the next couple of months. I would just like you to meet everybody. Lynn talked about we've kind of broken into groups and we're focusing on. Met with the fire department. And that's what I mean about small little groups or meeting with small little groups and getting their input. And then soon we will be added to the Community Heart and Soul website. Piazza will actually be on it as a as a new member of the Community Hearts will now.
Awesome.
Yeah. Any questions?
How will the surveys be going out?
Electronically.
Okay.
High school students will probably do Google.
Google.
Google forms and probably something very similar for residents. Yeah.
We also talked about a QR code.
Yeah.
Yep.
Postcards. So when we're at events, it's like people can just scan the QR code, maybe getting some of those into local businesses.
Very good.
So if you're at Red Roof and there's a sign up and you want to know what it's all about, the QR code's right there.
That's great. That's awesome.
Do I get a discount at Red Roof?
You know, I'm not.
You were red.
There, so I can't.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. And then Denise kind of used Copilot here as a pilot project to, we we input our, she put inputted our data into it. And these are kind of the themes that came out that we would like you to just know so far. This is what the people of Piazza are saying.
And we'll continue to build on this. So, you know, as we get surveys in, we want to make sure that we're hitting all of the different demographics. So we're going to be tracking all of that type of information and make sure that we've got every voice heard that is in our town. And then we'll collect all of it. I use Copilot, you know, to summarize the information, which is a really good tool. And we'll we'll be able to summarize it and get those, you know, those standout themes, which is what we're looking for.
And Denise has a nice spreadsheet with, I mean, the list is quite lengthy of the groups that we're trying to meet with. People that are coming to Piazza to work, business, again, not just residents, but people that support local businesses as well.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you. Two.
Can I share two things, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may.
I sat in on the last P E D C meeting. This is something that I think brings your attention. They're talking about trying to move in the direction of an annual meeting and have it at a predictable time, probably in the spring, and then try to fill it with content to attract the businesses to come. So there was some discussion about that kind of a thing. They're also thinking about having a developer roundtable. That's what they were calling it. Invite all the developers that are doing work in around Piazza to have a conversation. They're targeting that for March 3rd at Dark Bird. So kind of like, look at that date and watch that date and I'm sure we'll see more about that before it comes. We did share information then and that helped me with got it back to the P E D C about all the different developers that are are working or will be working at around Piazza. So they can extend invitations.
I do. We will move on to HR committee report.
I put a note in there. There's.
Got anything?
Didn't mean to steal your thunder, John.
I don't know.
I thundered.
He's not on the HR.
Oh.
It's Brian and Jeff.
Actually, no.
What are you?
I was going to answer and he said John and I'm like, wait a minute, he's.
I said Jeff.
Yeah, he said Jeff.
They said Jeff.
I've got a cold, sorry.
Jeff.
Nothing.
Yeah.
Still nothing. It's still a matter of John, Jeff, Justin. Other J's.
Okay, point taken.
I know I don't look like I know what I'm doing up here, but everyone's. All right, Greater Dubuque Development Corp., Jason's here to give us an update. Hello, Jason.
Hello, everybody. Mayor, council members, my name is Jason White, Service Vice President of Business Services for Greater Dubuque Development. And this meeting tonight, my presentation is just to update you on some of the things going on with respect to our organization and the Piazza community. One thing that hopefully you now have, and going forward, I'm going to make a better attempt to try to get you information further ahead of time. But nonetheless, I think I showed us, I saw that placed it as a link for your packet for tonight. That is the latest quarterly dashboard we have with our info action program. If you remember several months ago when I was here, that was given from last fiscal year, from June, I'm sorry, July 23rd, July 2023 to June 2024, for Piazza based companies. So this, however, is for this last quarter, so October through December of 2024. And that's for all visits done throughout tri-state area. Most of them in Dubuque County, some of them. Piazza, actually, there were 10, 10 totally, about 1,155 employees. But on a community by community basis, we won't have a summary until the end of the fiscal year. So, but we will do that. I think this year was the first year we did that. I think that was a good exercise. I think it was rated well by you folks and we'll try to do that again. Just real quick on that side of things. Again, I won't spend a lot of time on this because you have it, you can read it. But nonetheless, there were 59 total visits. One of the things we do from a compare and contrast standpoint is we look at this quarter, this last quarter, 2024, compared from to last year's fourth quarter, 2023. So you could see, like, for example, the government relations index. All different levels of government were rated higher in Q4 of 2024 versus Q4 2023. On the public services index, fire, police and ambulance are all rated as the top level community services. I always think this is kind of noteworthy because while every community pays their police, that's not the case with fires and ambulance. So it's always interesting to see that, especially with the committees that have volunteers rating and appreciating the folks that serve their community. And then you can kind of see how they how they go down here. People value their schools, they value their colleges, value the healthcare system, even though I was down a little bit this last quarter compared to last year. On the bottom, let's kind of focus on the negative here a little bit. Public transportation has come up quite often by employers as a negative because RTA does have service to the rural part of Dubuque County, but it's usually not for specifically for employment. Probably can be for employment, but they're not set up with the capacity to do that as often as it might be needed. So in some cases, employers are saying, well, that's not necessarily applies to our workforce. In some cases it does, but in many cases it doesn't. And they just say it's just something we just don't have, you know, in terms of that as a good service. We do hear that and we have heard that historically at Piazza, however, that a more viable public transportation network to get people from Dubuque to Piazza would be good. Different things have been tried over time. Some have been less, haven't been real successful, candidly. But nonetheless, that has come up. Property taxes, I mean, people don't like to pay their property taxes, so that's, that's not a surprise. It would be a surprise if that was ranked first, but it's not spreading this right forth from the bottom. Housing actually had a slight uptick with that, very, very slight, but still a need for our community and our region. Our cargo is kind of a, you know, some cases, people don't market anything for that. So I'm not real worried about that one. And then airline passenger service, in spite of now having service because of December 4th, is still ranked as the lowest service in our market. So this is my infomercial at this point to encourage people to fly a DBQ. As a board member of DBQ Air, we've worked with DB Denver Air and also O'Hare to make some improvements with the the process of flying in and out of O'Hare. We started this not knowing that our terminal would be under construction, which has resulted in all kinds of problems for travelers. Fortunately, a week, a month from now, that destruction will be finished. Hopefully, any of those headaches will be beyond us. But in the meantime, steps have been taken to try to alleviate that in the last few weeks. So that's my plea to not give up on Denver Air because the hope is that people do use it and we add more services over time. Beyond that, you can see, well, Brian and I were talking about this coming in. But you can see some of the barriers. Workforce still shows up as number one. But the things that we're finding there is we have fewer employers that are hiring. But we have more employers that not necessarily are laying off folks, they're just not replacing them as they have attrition. So we're seeing more and more of that at this point. But there are certain skills and positions that are still hard to find, technical positions in particular. Population, obviously, we are a growth, a growth county compared to many other counties in the state, but nonetheless, more population, more workforce. And then land shows up for space availability, shovel ready sites, costs, things of that nature. We have seen that a bit here in terms of some of the landlords that we'd like to encourage to sell for future development interest. But we've seen that in other places as well. In terms of strengths, quality of life ranks high, our location and market show size ranks high, employee work ethic shows up high as well. One factor that we always look at is, you know, while only 35% of our employers said that sales are increasing, 46 and indicated their market share is increasing. So even if they are not having a banner year from a sales perspective, they aren't pulling steady versus their competitors. So, so just, you know, a few observations from the last quarter. And we'll continue to run those every quarter as we get those. So just a few other notes as well. One of the things that, and I'm not going to spend a ton of time on this, but we are working with P E D C to continue to identify sites, buildings, properties that are available for development. And we have a system that we've subscribed to, actually, that's supposed to feed into LOAS called Resimplify. And what that does is it scoops properties from commercial real estate sites and takes the extra step, converts them into LOAS, which is the system that the state uses for an inventory of buildings and sites for site selectors looking to locate in the state of Iowa. And in Piazza, we have a number of sites that are not listed with a commercial real estate broker. So we have to do a little bit more legwork as a partnership to to come up with some of that information. Do have some things on there. I know Q4 Real Estate has their properties on there, for example. And we do have that on Resimplify and LOAS. Matt Schulte's commercial space, we'd like to get on there, but it's just a matter of how he presents it on his website versus in a way that Resimplify can pick it up. So other than conversations in recent days about that as well. Other things, just, you know, and then I have a meeting later later this week with a couple of utility partners. They're interested in continuing to build relationships here in Piazza, specifically with the city. We have served as an ex officio on the housing committee, if you're housing study committee, and the work that 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 group is doing. We too tend the Piazza Economic Development Corporation meetings. I'm really excited about the initiative that is taking place here in the community. One of the members of the committee, actually, is a good friend of mine, Shelley, we used to work in Indianola together back in the day. And she moved here a couple of years before I did. And she was looking for a way to get involved in the community. Was really excited that she could she could do it through the Heart and Soul initiative. We were currently involved, and you're aware of this, in a mega economic development project. And it goes back to what I said before, in terms of have, you know, making sure we have the land needed for the the developer to move forward. That seems to be the sticking point at this point. It's a very sizable project and they do have land under options at this point. And believe it or not, they need even more land than what they have under option. So, so I know that that's important for you folks for needing to move forward with some of your plans to serve your community. So that's a project that is in use to be in discussion. We met with two real estate brokers this past week that you already have been meeting with, just to touch base about things that they're doing here in the Piazza and the area with clients that they're working with. And then one thing I think is interesting, too, and I didn't bring this up here, but I can have it. So one facet of our organization is we have two members of our team who do workforce. Mandy Dolson is kind of on the HR side. She's currently the head of Chair's TRIRA, which is the SHRM Organization for HR Professionals in Dubuque area. But she meets with HR professionals throughout the market and just talks about ways to that they can get their workforce or different tools that maybe they're utilizing or or not utilizing to continue to do that by talent. And then Nick Hockenberry is our workforce professional that works for higher ed, nonprofit governmental partners. And things I learned when I talked to my teammates. Mandy, actually, in the last few months, has worked with five leading employers here in the community. One of which, she shared salary.com information, which was data that's available on the market to help employers figure out whether they're competitive with how they're paying their workers. She also does what's called, we talked about info actions, she also does what's called HR actions. So what we do at Info Action is with the executive, she does that with HR managers. She had done that with several employers here in Piazza. She also has set up an auto feed on access to viewjobs.com for some of these employers. So just what I described with our properties. If jobs are listed on our company's website, it pulls those into access to viewjobs.com. And also, one of your employers here had, was a new manager here from outside the community that joined our distinctively Dubuque six-weeks program to learn more about the area. So those are the kind of things that she's been involved with with some of your HR managers, some of your companies here as well. So, so if that's, I'm just going to pause and see if you have any questions, comments, concerns, your ideas.
We appreciate the efforts on yours and GDDC's part in helping us to stay focused and keep moving forward. You know, I did enjoy seeing the the development, the real estate part of it, that hey, there's something new that we hadn't talked about before. So trying to get that availability out there that somebody who didn't know they were looking for property in Piazza might.
Can find it.
Yeah, sure. Very excited about that that moving forward.
And then, brother, councilor, Chad's had mentioned future developers roundtable kind of thing. I know East Dubuque is having one on February 19th. And we helped them develop developers list, folks to invite. So happy to help P E D C or the city, whoever's taking the lead on that as well.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on. We have 2025-02, an ordinance amending the Title V public works, Chapter 50 and 53, garbage first reading.
This was discussed at the work session.
This keeps the outside areas at 150%.
Yes.
This is basically because we're upside down.
I'm sorry?
Just basically because we're upside down?
No, so this is, this, so with our contract, so we're.
Contract.
We chose a rate, yes. So that way each year when the contract increases by 3%, these increase will also increase.
I said that wrong.
Yep.
I'll make a motion on 2025-02, an ordinance amending the Title V public works, Chapter 50 and 53, related to garbage. Make a motion to approve, approve the first reading.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I. Motion carries. I'll ask council at this time if they're interested in spending rules, waive the second, third reading, or if they'd like to see this come up on the future meetings.
If this is our contract, these are our rates.
We really won't be changing rates.
Right, really not.
I know.
Yeah, it doesn't ruin.
We'll just keep pace. If so, a motion to waive.
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third reading.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I. Motion carries and I'll need a motion to adopt. Make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I. Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm always surprised when you do that and never write it down ahead of time, so.
Sometimes I learn things, I told you. Next up, resolution approving proposals submitted by G Works or in front desk standard, implementing onboarding annual subscription. So this is just approving the resolution for the contract, correct?
I think on this road.
Correct, yeah.
I think my only question, this is for a one-year period.
Yes.
And when is it effective? I couldn't find it in the contract.
It's calendar year, so January.
January 1st?
Yes.
It's this year, this calendar year.
So it's the same company that we already have. They're just moving to the cloud. So our options were to find someone else or move to the cloud with them. It's quite a bit more expensive. However, I think that we want to stay with it for now and kind of see how things go. I did look into one other company and it was very expensive to move over. So the plan is just to keep going with this company. If we sign the contract by March, then we're locked in. We have to sign a contract or find someone new by December 31st. So if we sign the contract now, that locks in the rate for next year.
Well, that's what I was going to ask if we have any rate protection for future periods? So just one, when we sign for this year, we're protected for.
And by then we'll decide whether or not we, I mean, it's the same company we have. There's just a lot of new stuff with it. And so I feel like, you know, then at the end of that year, if we decide, no, we want to go with a different software company to save money or because it's better, we can go from there. There's a lot of cities that are changing. But we're going to stick it out.
That's a resounding. We love it.
I know, we're going to stick it out.
We're going to stick it out, yeah.
Yeah. Changes change, right? So whether it's changing or not, but it should be, it should be a good thing.
This is locking you in until the end of '26.
Correct. Right. Well, we just, we just paid for 2025, so this contract will be for 2026 to actually go to the cloud. Now, we may be able to get on the cloud in August or September later this year. And if they don't have all 400 cities moved over by the end of this calendar year, it could be a year from now, like into 2026, but this price will be the same. And this price, in fact, is what we were built for for 2025 as well. So it will be all cloud-based, so part of that front desk piece that is part of the utility billing, it'll all sync now, instead of having to sync it together, it'll all be cloud-based software, and so there's a lot of new a lot of new and hopefully exciting things that it'll do that our current system doesn't do.
HBS or not.
Hopefully, yeah, that's what they promise.
Always promise. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving proposal submitted by G-Works.
Second.
Brian, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries.
So it's kind of a segue into that, um we will need to switch our credit card process and our ACH processor to G-Work. Um, right now, we are covering all the ACH fees at about fifty cents per ACH for our residents. Um, and then the credit card fees are being absorbed by or the contractor buying the permit or whatever, whoever's making the payment. It's gonna go up significantly to a minimum of a dollar thirty per ACH. So right now, we're paying maybe three seventy-five on average, it'll more than double that. So we just want to add that fee and have the residents, so when they're going in to pay their water bill, they'll have another dollar thirty fee on top of that for the ACH to pull. As part of that, they're going to have to, so we're going to really get this out um to the public, they're going to have to go in, if they already have a front desk account, change their ACH information, because the old one will no longer work. They'll have to go log in and they'll authorize and say, yes, I agree to this extra charge for my ACH, or as I agreed to the credit card processing fee, um and then they'll go in and sign up for auto pay. They'll have like a sixty-day window, and then after that, it'll just kind of be cut off, and if they're on ACH and they're and they're just not gonna cut, it's not gonna pull if they don't set up the new one. Um, so they don't have to set up a new ACH, but we're, we'd like them to. Um, I know some people are gonna say, well, I don't want to pay a dollar thirty to pull my payment out, but we don't have a choice.
Well, the fee's even higher if you use the credit card.
Yes, the fees, yeah, right now, we're paying two-point-seven-five percent for the credit card, but the resident or the contractor is paying that fee. I feel like anywhere you go now, you go to Red Roof, and if you're gonna pay with a credit card, they're gonna charge you more. No, that's the Red Roof, by the way, no, okay. So we just always go get cash before we go, yeah, um, so, yeah, so it's.
Pay a fee everywhere.
Yeah, I, I hundred percent it would, three percent across the board.
Retailers have gone to that.
There's really weird laws when it comes to passing on those fees, though, so are, did you check to see if that was?
G-Works, we have the option.
Legal, okay.
When they set up the software.
Not the credit card, I mean the ACH.
When we set up the credit card, we set up G-Works Pay with them, which we're going to set up the G-Works Pay portion in the next couple of months in preparation for going to the cloud, will be one less thing we have to do later. They give you the option, you either charge the resident, it, so they set it up on their end, and they're authorizing it when they set up their ACH. So they go in and put their routing number and their bank account information in, and they're authorizing it right then and there to say, yes, I agree to pay this dollar thirty or whenever for it.
So there's nothing that, and it won't allow them to, to move on unless they check that box?
Will there be a notice going out about this?
So we'll have to, yeah, so we'll be able to send email, text, alerts, Facebook, like, we're gonna get everybody newsletter. After this month's pa- payment comes out, we'll start it probably next week to try to get people to move over for the first month or two for sixty days, it'll still pull their old way. So we, we have time, and then as we can, they'll help us pull reports as we get to that point, or we can pull up and say, here's the fifty people that are left, and then we can start, you know, emailing them directly, calling them, reaching out, mail something to them to say, hey, your payment's not gonna be pulled, and then, of course, we'll have to show them some grace potentially on some penalties or things like that if they somehow didn't get the communication.
Is there some thought of doing a mailing?
No, yes, but not until we get down to much fewer.
It's too low, that's.
Yeah, it's.
Try to get everything to go by stuff.
They, you know, they don't, they're, they're.
They won't see her.
So we have a sixty-day onboarding process, so my goal would be to get everybody by word of mouth, by sending emails, putting on the water bill, putting it in the newsletter, putting it everywhere we can. And then if we get down to where we have like maybe fifty people that we could consider doing a mailing, we have over five hundred people on ACH, so it's six, seventy-three cents a, a letter, that's.
Dustin's volunteering to go to.
Yeah, so we could, we could probably put up some door hangers.
Door hangers with.
This isn't telling.
Does it affect our commercial and business customers, too?
Anybody that's on ACH, yes.
Justin, before you go, door to door, get a permit.
But we have the ability to send out email and on desk, so we'll be able to send emails out, text messages, and and I told them, I said, I need at least sixty days, I don't want the thirty, I want at least sixty, so we can start monitoring it, and we can make phone calls because we need to as well. It's really kind of a necessary evil. I didn't want it to switch, that's why we, we went with front desk, but they, they won't support it anymore, so they kind of get you. So this is just a fee resolution to add those fees.
I will make a resolution amending fees, ACH, e-checks, and credit cards to G-Works Pay.
I'll second.
We just want to make sure we're legal. But if you're, if you're solid that we can charge the fee.
Yes, I'm a hundred percent sure, and I'm sure that G-Works will not put out anything without.
They do it automatically, I would assume that's legal.
Well, I, they have their own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta acknowledge.
All right, Brian, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries.
Just weird.
Uh, next up, resolution and setting a public hearing for the zoning code of ordinance provision. And the zoning, setting a zoning net last night. Right, this is to set the hearing.
Yes, for February eleventh. I don't think there's anyone from Planning and Zoning Online. Hopefully, you got an opportunity to read the notes, Jason.
And the ordinance.
Yes.
This is what we talked about doing, you know, back in late twenty-twenty-three, so this is good. It's gonna fill some of those gaps that our zoning ordinance had.
It's a start. Um, planning and zoning's worry last night was, are we just doing this as a knee-jerk reaction? And no, we're we're gonna continue going through the zoning. Um, it's a living document, it's just like any other ordinance that we have, it's gonna continue to change and evolve. And this is just one of the evolutions I have.
If I find something else we want to change later, we'll look at that. So I will need a motion to uh pass a resolution to set the public hearing for February eleventh.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the zoning ordinance change revisions for February eleventh.
I'll second. I just have one question. Do we have a, a full Board of Adjustment?
Um, I would have to look back, it's been a while since we've met.
We should probably look, you know, as a city council, do we have Board of Adjustments fully staffed, because there's some conditional uses now?
Right.
We should be wise about having that filled out and, and write people on it.
Yeah, we can look at the, the list right now.
I, I thought we were full.
We can let you know before you go, we go on the S Drive and pull it up, we've got a spreadsheet with everybody's names and social security numbers and blood types.
Blood types.
Really?
All right. Quick quiz. I will say.
Positive.
Right, positive.
Lexi.
Oh.
Justin, I.
Jeff, I.
I also want to let you know there will be a mailing going out to anybody within two hundred feet.
Oh, not the whole town, just two hundred feet.
Yeah, and we will make sure it's on Facebook, it's on the website, and it's, people are, they know about it. And the, um, the notice that we put in the Telegraph Herald will be very descriptive. It won't be just your generic, hey, we're having the public hearing on February eleventh, um.
Yeah. Do our developers or people that own these properties that are getting rezoned automatically get a mailing as well?
No.
Can we do that?
Sure, absolutely, we can mail them out to the developers, but what about the potential developers that might be looking at the area?
I'm, the people that own the ones that are, you know, the people that own the properties that are gonna be rezoned.
Yeah, if that's the, the council's preference, I'd be happy to send it out to the developers.
Do it.
Okay.
Do that. If they own the property, not the developers themselves.
The property owners.
Property owners is probably, right, we can, yeah.
Do you not want me to send it out to the developers?
I think that they'd be the ones, the developers that own the property, I think.
Right.
Some of them are the owners.
Yes, the owners.
Correct, okay.
Yeah. All right, uh, it, it has passed.
Yes.
So it is approved. At this time, I will open it up to citizen comment for anyone who would like to address counsel at this time. All right, we'll close this the comment, and I'll need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
It looks like we have fines.